We'll call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we will open our public hearing for the franchise agreement with Midco.
At what time?
7:01.
All right, um, we have...
We have a comment.
Well, you opened the public hearing.
Absolutely.
If you want to do your introduction first, please go ahead. I don't mean to jump the gun.
No, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say how much I am in favor of this particular build and this particular ordinance which allows the city of Janesville to improve its fiber service throughout the entire city. We have enclaves of places within the city that have fiber right now, but it is not ubiquitous throughout the city. I would just urge you to work with Midco and other companies to make sure that your anchor institutions are well-served, your schools, your library, your city hall, those places. And, um, uh, we know that, that good, strong, reliable, affordable internet is, it's a basis for economic development, and moving ahead with this is good for the economy of Wasika County and particularly of Janesville, Minnesota. So, thanks for working with the company.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you, Dee. In case you don't know, this is Dee Malter. She's, uh, county commissioner for our area. This is our new golf course guy. I think everybody else knows everybody here, so...
Okay, so our last council meeting, we had the first reading, um, and I do know, in speaking with staff, you can come up with...
We did have a couple of concerns, so we called them today and talked to them a little bit, but I think that's what Joe was gonna...
Yeah, Joe Zemke, Public Works Director, City of Janesville. Yeah, with, with the new proposed cable company coming in, the only concern staff-wise that we have would be volume of locates. Usually when them, them companies come in, they oodles and oodles of locates, and we're not really staffed to do that. And I think we will be able to maybe negotiate with them on the permitting process to maybe contract a third party to come in and help with those locates at, uh, Midco's expense, primarily is my hope. I just wanted the council to be aware that it's, it's a huge, huge task when, uh, when they come in and, and want to do the whole town locating existing utilities is, is huge. So, just wanted the council to be aware, um, and I, and like Clinton said, he's been in contact with them already on that, um, but I just wanted that out there for everyone to know.
Sounds like you'll be able to work with them now and they'll figure, figure something out.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and earlier they had said that they planned on doing 1,500 feet a day.
Yep.
Um, today he said that they could cut that back to 750, um, build the speed or, you know, a little longer in the summer, but, um, so...
That's half.
Right, yeah, and I think even at that, at that too, that's going to be a huge task for current staffing to, to maintain that. So, those are discussions that need to be had, um, with them.
Who'd you have in mind over the other seven times, buddy?
I, you know, I was gonna talk to some different communities and see what they do. I, I don't really know. Um, you know, someone with capabilities of, of coming in locating the power and the water and, you know, sewer for that matter too, as far as that goes, so, um, I'm not sure who...
Whoever it is will be properly marked and everything, so you're not concerning everybody that's like, "Oh, my gosh, there's somebody tricked into some of y'all."
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, they, they, I would assume that they would take all responsibility on this and everything, and...
Yeah, yeah.
They'd have to.
They'd have to, yeah. If they, if, right.
You, you had another company that we did this past summer. Any idea how many feet they put in or as they were repaired, they were on field street and came up second?
Uh, as far as footage-wise, I'm not exactly sure, but, but, yeah.
Um, they did say that when they're planning out this project, they will inform everybody two weeks ahead of the week they're gonna do that street. You know, you're go for one call, obviously it's shorter time than that state law, but he did say today that he would give us like a, a two-week timeframe. So, that may help a little bit.
Right.
And they'll also be required to notify the residents when they're doing a look-up to them?
Well, they're not taking it into all...
Right, yeah.
Up to the outside, wherever the box currently is.
Yeah, just in the yard and in the right-of-way. All, all their work will be in the right-of-way unless you do that pre-registration, I believe, from what I understood. Dee?
If you're looking for somebody to talk to, I know that they've started the process in Wasika, okay?
Oh, okay.
It does some work here for this last summer, and so they have experience working with them.
That'd be a good resource to reach out to, the...
Like, if you're, I'd give it, reach out to me over there.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Joe. Any questions? Um, the ordinance has not changed since our first reading, but, uh, looking for a motion to approve ordinance 2025H.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
And let's, uh, announce the time.
Oh, it is 7:05.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. Consent agenda, we have the minutes from our last meeting, payables and receivables. Uh, nothing really sticks out too much with our, with our payables right now, they're pretty routine. And I was gonna mention, our next meeting is December 8th, so we obviously will have payables and receivables for that meeting, but prior to the end of December, we will probably send out another batch, and I can show that to you guys in January.
Okay.
Any questions?
All in favor? Public forum, anyone wish? And she's back!
Figured I'd stick to the subject at hand, well, um, just a couple things on my mind. We are coming up on the legislative season, and last Wednesday, Wasika County hosted a legislative luncheon, and I know that there was invitation sent to the city of Janesville. We had a really good turnout, we had all our state legislators, and we did have representation there from both our, um, both Amy Klonwushar and Brad Finstead on the federal level. Um, I, I think we're gonna try to make this a regular affair, probably about the same time of year every year. And I was really impressed with the effectiveness of it. We really got prime time to both listen to and talk to our legislators, and just want to make sure that, that next time we, um, we do this, we want everybody at the table. So, um, I, Wasika hasn't a particularly big ask in, because they're looking for some water infrastructure and a water tower, um, so that ConAgra can continue to grow over there. But, um, we at Wasika County are trying to make sure that we too are providing a forum and a connection point for our cities, to partner with our cities and our townships, so that we can kind of come, we're too little to each, come to our legislators separately and hope that's gonna work. And so, just want you to know that there's partnership there to be had, and we want to make sure that, that, um, that if you've got something that, that you really need or are advocating for, and you want the county to speak to that too, we wanna, we wanna work with you on that. Let's see, what else? It's the end of the year, uh, you may have gotten your proposed tax statements from Wasika County, I know they went out last week, um, and we're all working on our final levies, so, and we are too, just like you guys are. So, any questions for me or anything I should know as we rush toward the end of the year and try to make sure that we're ready for '26? Just know that I'm here and we want to work together. We're too little to work on our own, let's have partnership.
Thank you, Dee. Anyone else wish to speak to your public forum? Okay, notice in communications.
Uh, you have the magazine, Minnesota Cities Magazine there. That's all I have for notifications for you.
Council reports, tell that.
Uh, Gulf Advisory Board met, uh, last week. I know Jacob did spread us some information, and then, and just come this week.
Yeah, this week is what I have, now, you know.
I don't know, we just kinda talk about some of the projects and, I guess that could be worth a while. And so, we meet again on February 12th, five thirty.
Uh, on the EDA, uh, wanna make a note that O-Run Remat is opening in in town and encourage customers to use it. We have a business challenge coming up here, and if anybody in town that would like to start a new business, has an idea to start a new business, we will coach them through, they'll set up a business plan, and there's an opportunity, uh, the county has given us $10,000 grant for this, if we can find us a little candidate, uh, from our EDA budget, we're hoping that we can match that for another 10 grand, along with some other perks from some of the people that are already in business there in town. Park Road, uh, we repaired the deck, uh, we didn't get the handrail payment, so it's not open until spring. As far as the water damage, we're down to repairing the two public restrooms on the main floor, they need to, uh, winolyum or flooring. We've got a problem with HUD and our fire code doors. The doors, like everything else in the building, they're 40 years old. If a door has a sticker on it, it's caused by the fire code door, it cannot have any... The big deal is they all have footstops to hold the doors open. Those are no longer allowed, so they have to remove them. If they remove them, the door now has a hole in it. It cannot attach a fire code door. And even if there wasn't one on there, and a resident sometime in the last 40 years put a, a pin or tack in there to hang up a decoration on the door, the door no longer meets code. So, we're wrestling with that and seeing what we can get by, but... We do have, you know, our building is full except for the two apartments, they're still being, uh, at this time, I believe they're being cleaned for the residents to return, uh, but we do have a rather long waiting, uh, for this particular customer. That's what I have.
I have a question, that, uh, that grant, is that for like mainstream business or business anywhere in town?
We, we put business district, correct? Business district.
Uh, that doesn't mean it's just for those two blocks.
No, sure.
No, yeah, I mean, you can go...
You know, you can go down the front street or all the way into the front. We don't want us to be in somebody's...
Yeah, not a home business, but, uh... Oh.
Park Board's not meeting anymore this year, and unless an emergency pops up, planning commission's not meeting.
We don't really have enough for the quorum, but we went over a little bit. Nancy Westfall was awarded caregiver, caregiver of the year, and she has put in 45 years of service on it, the nursing home. So, if you see her, give her a congratulation. But, it was a pretty big deal, so...
All right. Administrator report.
All right, you got the cash balance dated last Friday, the 21st. Um, the employee notices for the Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave were sent out in last week's payroll, so all the employees have that notice, and we're asking for them to sign that back page and give it back to Sarah Jo for, for the file. Friday, November 14th, a couple Fridays ago, the Free Press had a fantastic article about property taxes across Minnesota. Um, it was a really good article, so I copied it for you to read. The Department of Revenue is reporting that on average, cities in Minnesota have an increase of eight to nine percent on their levies. And right now, we are at 10%. Then the Coalition, the very last couple pages here of this report, uh, they also had some numbers in there about, you know, historical, what levies have been across Minnesota, says a pretty good read too, I thought. Um, the council had asked that we look at considering increasing franchise fees, since we had not done that in, for so many years. The council of governments did run a quick little survey for us, and basically, cities similar size, their, their franchise fees are basically 5%. So, I would probably encourage the council, let's not look at increasing franchise fees this year, um, since we are on that same level, you know, with the other communities that they surveyed. Um, and then, Joe was here too, probably coming up here pretty soon, we had discussed purchasing a used sweeper in 2026, so when we do get some information on that, we will bring that to the council to discuss. Yep.
Can I talk a little bit on that, Cliff?
Yep.
Yeah, as you said, we're looking at updating our street sweeper in 2026, betting contact, um, with McLean equipment out of St. Paul, Nick Younger and myself, we'll put up there a couple weeks ago, and looked at a couple units. My recommendation is gonna be kind of to hit that 2015, 2017 range, as far as the year. And we looked at both units, the 2015 is gonna come in at right around $140,000, and that has 3,900 hours on it and 18,500 miles. The 2017, so it's a couple years newer, um, is gonna come in at around 162,000, and that has considerably less hours of 2,500 and miles of 11,000. Essentially the same unit, a couple updates, there's a suspension updates, um, but McLean goes through everything, uh, if a seal's badly replaced it, if anything's faulty, they replace it. As they get these bigger cities coming in to buy the new ones, you know, they're 300 and some thousand. These used ones don't stick around too long. And I don't know, what they want from us is just a verbal, a verbal, say, "Yes, we're gonna take this one, obviously we're not gonna purchase it until next year." But just get our name on it and put it on hold per se. Is there any need in motion, or can we just have a discussion and, um...
I don't know if we necessarily have to make, unless you want to make a motion.
Like I said, 140 for the 2015 and 162 for the 2017.
What's our current one, as far as year and hours?
The 1996 with, we're gonna ask $6,300.
Look at that little note taken.
Yeah. I was hoping someone would ask that.
Well, so you're already two-thirds of the way there with that 15. You're already two-thirds of the way there with that 15.
Right, right.
Two-thirds of the way to the hours we got.
Yep. They, yes, it is less money and they do go through it, but yeah, it's got a higher, higher hours on it, so...
How many hours do you put on?
Uh, over, over 200 a year, just over 200, usually 200, 250 depending. But then, and also with that, it's my anticipation that I'll, we will sweep more, being that we have a nice steel cap, uh, and stuff like that too, so, yeah. But yeah, right around the 200 right now, so, yeah, that in itself, I mean, that 39 versus 2,500, that's quite a few years.
So, 10 years would be 2,000 dollars?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess it would be my recommendation to put a hold on the 17, um, but that's kind of for discussion too, so, um, the funds will come out of the street reserve, like we had discussed, so, but yeah, we're not officially purchasing, we're just putting our name on it, so...
And there's plenty in the street, street reserves for this?
Yeah.
So, if something different came in, like a better deal came in, can you switch and say, "I want this one instead of the one that I put my name on"?
Um, I don't know.
Since I, since it's so far out, I mean, I'm just wondering.
Right, right, yeah, potentially, possibly.
First of the year, I would assume there'll be a lot of them going out the door.
Right.
And then, the new batch of used ones will be coming in, and they're all gonna have to be gone through.
Yep.
Which takes, it's pretty complex, so...
I don't know how long it takes them, but...
I don't think the company would have a problem if you wanted to...
If you were staying with them and you were upgrading, yeah.
If you were upgrading, if you were downgrading, that'd be something different.
But yeah, they, they don't go through the units until they're, the used units until they're spoken for, so once we put our name on them, then, and then they go through it, then with the one, either one of these, that'd be like a March delivery, late March delivery.
See, having time for spring.
Yeah, right.
Do you have brushes or spare parts you need that are gonna fit this, or...
We don't usually keep a lot of parts on hand for the sweeper, being that we can usually just get them the next day anyway, and they burn enough shop space, so, um, gutter room brushes are aye, we have those, and they're, they would go right on, even one of these, the ones we do, two sets we do have, but yeah.
What's our old one worth? Nothing?
Um...
Just throw it on the end bed, or what?
I think so. Five grand, find a contractor or somebody that's looking for something, if we have a job site, or would be my guess, five, 10 grand, 10 being really high.
Strippers, like them?
Oh, sure, yeah.
But then, elegance is so slow, it may take you forever to get them down, yeah. So...
Do you want to maybe make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
2017, in my opinion, would be...
Yeah, for 20,000 more and close to half the hours, I think that's makes the most sense.
As long as you just got the money already, put it down, right?
Pretty sure that was a motion.
That was a motion.
Okay.
2017, go for it. Second?
Yep, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. See you back up here in a couple minutes. All right, where am I at? Uh, Department, uh, yeah, that was...
Was that the end of the administrative report?
I know you jumped in.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
You're up. Department head's golf course.
Okay. So, and you really want me to go through, Cliff?
Well, could we, when we do the budget?
You wanna wait and do it when we do the budget? We'll just skip over you for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay? Under administration, we have the insurance rates came in.
Good news. Uh, we did, and I put it in your packet, the email from the Lees Insurance Trust, um, property and casualty rates are actually gonna decrease a little bit this year, and workers' comp is gonna look at a significant reduction as well. So, what I did is I basically put in the numbers that we had budgeted for 2025, and I put those in the 2026 budget, so we actually did see quite a huge savings with our insurance, so that's a good thing. I have not heard about auto premium rates yet, but when I do, we'll get those updated as well.
Well, what else should I tell you about that? I think that's all I got.
Well, what I know about workers' comp is your rate is usually based off of, um, claims...
Claims, yeah.
Yep.
So, if our rate went down, I assume that's because our employees are taking serious work safety, and we should maybe at least mention that we appreciate that.
And statewide, with the insurance trust, they are...
Claims are down.
Yeah, and a couple years ago, the insurance trust significantly increased workers' comp, especially like with the public safety positions and stuff, but now they're falling back on those a little bit now, so...
Liability waiver.
Yeah, so every year, we have these two forms that we, uh, sign off, we, the liability cover waiver is that very first page, and then we waiver the boiler coverage. We've done that every year too, so if I could just have a motion to do these two, um, I am meeting with Julie tomorrow at the Janesville Agency to go over our renewal for the year, so I can give these to her tomorrow. Yeah, you make a motion.
I will make the motion to approve the waiver, signing the waiver.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe? You're up.
Again?
Again. You're kind of the whole deal tonight.
She is.
Okay, sanitary sewer rate. Uh, we have done rate studies in the past, uh, we also presented the draft budget to you, um, earlier on in the year here for the sanitary, and that does call for a rate increase this year effective in January. Did I, did I steal it or thunder?
No.
Was it a rate increase on per gallons too, or was it just the base fee? I forget yet.
So, we love per gallon alone.
That's what I thought, is just your base...
Yeah, it's just the base fee.
Connection fee, yeah.
Yep, this time, yeah, the base connection charge, correct. From, I believe, $13 to $15, 50.
Yep.
So, that, just on that item, was the only thing that went on?
Yeah, 425 for 1,000, that's the same, 10 at that.
So, $2, $2.50 of a household or a bill?
Yep. Yeah, and I, if you remember seeing the charts and the graphs that Andrea had prepared, a lot of that, um, looking forward to projects coming up in 2027 and 2029, hopefully, um, trying to stay ahead of that, as well as other lift station improvements and control panel improvements that we have on the dock, so, that's kind of all included in that, so...
Curiosity question, why you target the base rate rather than the usage, just out of curiosity? Don't get me wrong, I'm personally glad I'm the usage side.
Just as kind of less of a, less of a blow, uh, to the, to the utility belt, is the main reason, uh, we were able to, to make it work just by doing that, so, that's kind of why I was, uh, so...
So, thank you to Joe and Andrea for working on these.
Hope you approve resolution 2025-18.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pretty sure you can sit down, buddy.
All right, Gavin, I will take care of everything at once with you.
All right, so we have here on the screen the golf course budget, um, like Andy had mentioned earlier here, uh, the Gulf Advisory Board has met, they looked at this budget a couple different times. We kind of took the conservative approach this year with, uh...
You're not on it?
Yeah, so...
You're not really on that screen.
Does that happen every meeting?
Pretty much.
Okay?
Only the ones where you're here.
So, we did take a little conservative approach to this year's budget, just with the changes we have and, um, you know, some different things, clubhouse improvements and things like that, so... like that, so, anybody have any questions on this?
Yep. Um, was that right there, we are, you go back up towards the top of the page, uh, in the margin, it's got 29, like, health. What is that referring to?
Yes, um, so, Scott Allen has health insurance with us, with the Blue Cross Blue Shield and what Blue Cross is doing is they are billing us for that and then Scott is reimbursing the insurance.
Scott's going to continue with Cobra insurance.
So, then we.
But he has to pay for it.
We will invoice him monthly for the.
That's why it's on the revenue side.
Yep.
Because he has to pay it back.
So, someplace it shows up in the insurance, does it make a difference to?
It does, yep.
If you go to the last page, the clubhouse.
That's why it's so much higher down there.
Yep.
Going from one to the other.
Yep, in and out.
And how long will that be?
As long as he wants. They changed the rules on Cobra, it's not necessarily 18 months anymore, it's perpetual as long as he wants, right? As long as he wants to keep it.
Okay. Uh, other question on the second page, uh, 613, 405, other item. And in the margins there, it says JGA projects.
Yes, um, if JGA is going to support a project with us, we still have to code it, you know, we still have to write the check, so what we'll do is, we're coding the JGA projects to that line item and then in the, on that first page revenue, you'll see JGA money coming in on revenue there.
I disagree with doing it that way. Um, we shouldn't be paying JGA for projects, they should be paying us, I mean.
That is, JGA's donating it?
Yep.
It's for accounting reasons, we had, they have to donate the money to us and then we pay the bill.
Yes, but it, this is the expense column.
Right, but it's also under the revenue column.
Yeah, so we'll pay the vendor, you know, when we get an invoice for something.
Yep, I don't know if I have one other question or not. Oh, yeah, uh, 613, 131, expense health insurance reimbursed back.
Yep.
That's part.
That's bound to the, but then, yeah, the 2950 in there multiple times. Just there with my question.
And the, uh, at our next council meeting, December 8th, you know, when we adopt the entire city budget, we will, we'll get this guy approved then.
I see you did drop some of the line items where we weren't quite spending what we thought we were. You dropped them for next year, which is good, I guess, so.
I, I have a question and, and I don't, I'm sure it shows up in here, but if somebody comes in and wants to run an event or a tournament or something like that, where is the revenue from that?
The very bottom line is a house rent.
Okay. That's, that's a pretty low amount for all the tournaments to get run out there, in my opinion.
So, that would be going under the tournaments would be under, that's just the clubhouse rental, right?
Yep.
So, that's just if somebody rents it out outside of the tournaments and I ask, the tournaments would be going into your.
Still goes into your sales.
Sales, yep, because that's where it gets run out in sales.
Into your, uh, play passes, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
No, they'd just be sales.
Yep, merchandise sales.
I mean, you're bringing them in as green.
You're bringing them in as green fees, right.
Yeah, green fees. So, when they come in, what we're, they're paying in green fees, they pay, they're charged whatever they're charging for the tournament and then they pay us the green fees once everyone pays down basically, is what we do.
I do have a question about clothing. Do they really sell a lot of clothing out there? Like merchandise and stuff?
I've only been there a month.
Yeah.
So, a few days here and there.
I was asking.
A lot of gloves and hats.
Gloves and hats.
Gloves and hats.
Shoes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's.
I was kind of wondering how that works, like, if they order in a bunch of clothing, how long does it sit out there and what happens to it if it doesn't move?
Inventory's pretty low right now. We'll find out sure Wednesday, but when I was out there a couple weeks ago, it, he was, he was selling it down.
Okay.
A lot of tournaments, if you, you win clubhouse money, with people.
They buy it.
Not a whole lot of times.
Okay.
So, a lot of it gets moved.
Okay. Good deal.
And that could be something too, if they want, you know, prizes for holes, things like that, that's part of that tournament money that comes in then and then they buy the shirt with it and give the shirt out with the prize, you know, instead of, they can just even cash back to this, that's a thing they can do too as well.
Okay.
You know, buy shirts or hats or whatever and that's for prices on as long as possible, you know, that kind of stuff.
Okay. I was just kind of wondering, like, how long does inventory actually sit in there? But, I never thought about the gloves and the hats and stuff, because everybody's using gloves and stuff, so, all right.
Trying to move out kind of what we have before I'm going to buy new stuff next year.
Right, right.
You know, that's the thing right now, is I don't want to buy much more, you know, next spring if we still have to go here.
And just be sitting on it for a while, yeah.
Try to get that out a little bit.
Okay.
The next stuff basically.
All right.
I recognize you're, you're fairly new with the course out, out there, but you've been here a little while and I'm just wondering if you've seen anything that you would like to change right away?
Um, nothing particular that just stands out. Um, I would say we've had a pretty good November with the weather here and stuff. Um, I mean, over the weekend, I had, from 10 o'clock in the morning till the end of the day, there wasn't a single open tee time. Um, and it wasn't just members, you know, the last few weeks, because there's a lot of courses that are closed around the area, so I think we've done well on that aspect. Um, I'm really diving into, the biggest thing that I'm going to probably dive into is that software system that's been bought. I think we can utilize that a lot more and get a little more technology wise with that with, um, customers and those kind of things and try to keep things a little more accurate with, um, repayment plans or things like that, or we've done in the past with people, so it's, that's, but I've been kind of in between running just the ins and outs right now of what you're doing at the end of the year here. Um, that's where I'm diving into and that's what I'm going to do the next few weeks once we shut the course down here and spend some time getting everything ready for next year in that case. So, that's probably the biggest thing I'm going to work on for me. I think that's going to help us as a staff also kind of be more organized and more efficient, to be honest, uh, if I can get some of that stuff updated a little bit and use that stuff to its full potential that we have.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Now, we realize that this wasn't much, you didn't have a lot to do with this budget, but why, we are holding you to it.
My own pressure.
It's just like being up here, the first year you come in, you're working on somebody else's budget, so.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
I'm not saying yes.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Second.
All in favor?